Please be seated. Colleagues, we and staff in Gallery, we have a particular treat today for the singing of our National Anthem. I'm very pleased to introduce to you Madeline Hodgson. Now, Madeline has been performing since age three and singing formerly from age seven. In 2013, she won the Junior Rise to Fame competition for singing. This past April, she competed in the Forest City Music Competition, and she placed third in the pop category and first in the Broadway competition. So I told Madeline that what she had to do was would she sing "Sorrow," you know, that great Gaga and Cooper song? And she started to sing one of the pieces from the movie, and she is tremendous. Madeline participates in the Forest City and Niagara City Music Competition in regular places amongst the top three. She's very active in her high school, which is Central, and in music department regularly participating in the band, string, and choir ensembles. And as we stand for the singing of our National Anthem, I'd ask you to help me welcome Madeline to the front.
(Singing) Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all thy sons' command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Bravo! So, colleagues, Madeline was warned that because I stand behind the singer at National Anthems that somehow my voice might carry. And then when I paid a little bit more attention to it today, I realized as the only other person singing besides or trying to besides Madeline, there's she was warned, by the way. So next time when we say please join us, and I'll say to the gallery, do join us. It would be a once-in-a-lifetime offer and opportunity as well. But that was Madeline Hodgson, and we're just delighted. Before we start with recognizing councillors for something, I need to add our regular message. And that is the City of London is committed to making every effort to provide alternate formats and communication support for council, standing in advisory committee meetings, and information upon request. To make a request for any city service, please contact accessibility@london.ca or 519-661-2489, extension 2425. It's typical that council would break for a bite to eat at 6:30, but I have to tell you, there's running water in my office and not too many others. Therefore, the restaurant is closed, and whether that inspires anybody to be more ambitious, so be it. Before we break request disclosures of pecuniary interest, Councillor Sally, did you have something you wanted to add, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say briefly I thank staff for all their efforts related to Jurassic Park. I think it's been a phenomenal job with such a... I know they're not clapping for me, just so you know, they're clapping for staff. And I know in particular Scott Stafford was heavily involved in it. Please send our thanks. I'm sure I'm speaking for all of council when I say it's been a phenomenal job. And I've heard many, many people are very excited, and of course, especially Ariel. So thank you, and congrats to the Raptors, and good luck to them.
Thank you. We would have put that under recognitions, but it's even more important that we put it ahead of them. So how good is that? I'll request any disclosures of pecuniary interest. Is this a recognition piece? You're going to wait your turn. I've learned now that I know what he's doing. All right, so any disclosures of pecuniary interest, please. Councillor Turner.
I thank you, Your Worship, with respect to item 2.3 on the Community and Protective Services Agenda. That's item three on the CAPS report, which is the, stand by, I'll get the right wording for it, is the London Middlesex Childcare and Early Years Service System Plan. Declare a pecuniary interest as my wife is an employee of an earlier center child reach, which receives provincial disbursements through the city.
So noted, thank you. Any other declarations? Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to declare an interest on items 6.1 under Communications and Petitions and 8.1, item 10, 10th Report of the Planning and Environment Committee, item 3.6. Both of those relate to 307 Fanshawe Park Road. And my interest is that my family owns property in the vicinity of that application site. I understand there may be an emergent motion coming forward, item 12 on our agenda. And because of my involvement in that matter, I would declare a pecuniary interest on that as well.
Thank you for that. I think we'll wait for the emergent motion before we declare any potential for conflict, which we could do at that time, should that be appropriate. Any other disclosures of pecuniary interest? Councillor Lewis.
Thank you, Your Worship. And I simply wanted to share because I had communicated to members of the public who'd contacted me about this that I have consulted the Integrity Commissioner, and I, in fact, am deemed not to have a conflict on 6.1 and 8.1, item 10, the items that Councillor Cassidy was just referring to as well. So I did consult on that, and I do not have a conflict.
So noted. Normally, we just declare conflicts, non-conflicts, but nice that you would tell us. Thank you. Any other declarations? Any other declarations of pecuniary interest? Councillor Edmer Bergen.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a conflict on, yes, thank you. I have a conflict on the sixth report of Community and Protective Services Committee, number three, from the 2.3 on the report. Also, number 11 on the agenda, which is 4.2 from the report. As my wife owns her own childcare.
So noted, thank you. Last call. Seeing none, thank you very much, colleagues. Recognizations. Councillor Morgan, you wanted to say something fairly thoughtful, I'm sure.
Well, I hope so. So for those who don't know, there is an association called the Association Municipal, our Managers, Clerks and Treasurers of Ontario. It's a well-known association of colleagues. I've had some involvements in the past with it, with my other hat on. They hand out a series of awards each year. One of those is an award named for their past president called the EA Danby Award, and it's about innovation for Ontario municipalities. And I wanted to bring the council's attention that our clerks and the elections team was the recipient of an award at the recent, I believe it was meeting, I forget what they're called because I don't attend them, the mission conference for their work on it. The award recognizes both executing innovative new practices as well as leading the way on things. And of course, AMCTO is meant to share best practices at those conferences. And so I know our clerks team and the execution of Canada's first ranked ballot election did so with thoughtful flawlessness and are now sharing their best practices with communities across Canada and across Ontario and have been recognized with this award. So congratulations to them.
We may be able to put that expression thoughtful flawlessness into Wikipedia going forward. Colleagues, I'd also like to add a, I'd like to recognize Councillor Turner, who wants to say something thoughtful.
Your Worship, you may be on the track of where I was going, so if I'm stealing your noise, then yeah.
Councillor Turner and I are pleased to tell you something. And that is that, look, we all know London is one of Canada's largest cities. So it's particularly crucial that in advocating for municipalities on a national scale, that we have national players. And so it's my absolute delight to advise council staff and colleagues, pardon me, in Gallery that Councillor Josh Morgan has been reelected to FCM's board. Are we on the right track, Councillor Turner? We had several individuals at the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Conference. And it was important that Josh be reelected for the strength that he brings and the presence that he brings to the Federation across Canada. And I actually personally think it's incredible that we are represented by such a dynamic, engaged, and passionate representative. We have a strong position on the board as London, and I'm confident that Councillor Morgan will continue to strengthen that position. He is the link to develop and maintain strong partnerships between all levels of government and works together so that we can build stronger communities and a stronger city. So on behalf of council staff and all of London, Josh, thank you for rerunning. Thank you for getting reelected. We appreciate your service and your ongoing commitment to this effort. Thank you. Any other nice things to say about anybody else? Councillor Turner, you're not quite done.
Your Worship, I did want to apologize for using the word noise. I was looking for a synonym for thunder, and that was the only one that came to my head. Your prose is always eloquent.
So noted, thank you. Going on, all right. Thank you all. I'm not aware of any confidential matters to be considered in public. Therefore, I will look for a motion to go into closed session. Councillor Kayabaga, seconded by Councillor Hopkins. I'll turn your attention to the screen.
Councillor Sally? Closing the vote, and the motion carries, 15 to zero.
Colleagues, as we move then to Committee Room Three for a closed session, I will advise the public you do not have to leave. We're just going to be a few minutes or whatever time it takes to deal with our confidential matters. And therefore, you're welcome to stay. And I'll ask colleagues to committee room three now. Thank you. Please be seated. I am looking for a motion to approve the minutes for May 21. Councillor Edinburgh, seconded by Councillor Sally. I think that was a hand raised. It was, good. Any comments or discussion? Then I'll turn your attention to the screen as we vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 15 to 0.
Thanks very much. Colleagues, under Communications and Petitions, I bring your attention to two communications that are on the agenda, one that's on the added agenda. So I'll look for a motion to receive those communications and refer them to be considered with the item to which they're related, moved by Councillor Palloza, seconded by Councillor Kayabaga. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll turn your attention to the screen as we vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 14 with one recused.
Thank you. There are no motions to which notice is given, so I'll turn your attention to itemate the reports. First, leading off with the 10th report of the Planning and Environment Committee. Councillor Hopkins, please.
Thank you, your worship. I would like to present the 10th report of the Planning and Environment Committee. I will be pulling number 10, which is 3.6, which is the application at 307 Fanchop Park Road East. I have not heard from any of my colleagues as to any other items that they would like to pull, so therefore I would like to put the rest of the items on the floor. It was, as you could see from the agenda, we had a number of public participation meetings.
Sorry, I apologize. Before we get into that, are there any items that colleagues wish to have removed before the Chair reports and provides comment? Councillor Squire? So we'll have Councillor Hopkins speak, and then you're welcome to do so. Any other comments of items to be withdrawn from the agenda? Seeing none, Councillor Hopkins.
Yes, so I would like to put the remaining items on the floor. I just would like to let my colleagues know that it's, we have a number of public participation meetings. We did have a good conversation around Bill 108, and obviously the response, the recommendation, and the covering letter has already gone out because the deadline was June 1st. And I just wonder if I could ask for you, your worship, to staff if they could give an update on Bill 108 as well.
That would be to staff?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ah, now it's, Bill 108 received royal assent on the 6th of June. However, the provisions related to the Planning Act are not yet proclaimed, so while we know what the new rules will be, we don't know when they will come into effect, and we're also expecting there to be regulations that will help us understand a little bit more what some of the rule changes are. But the status right now is that it has passed. The city's comments went in for the 1st of June deadline. The bill had been amended on the 29th of May, and what passed on the 6th was unchanged from the 29th.
So through you, Chair, to the staff, Mr. Barrett, can I just ask you one follow-up to Councillor Hopkins's question? That is, it receives royal assent, but it lacks that detail? Is that what you're saying?
Through the Chair, the bill received royal assent, so what the actual changes to the legislation are known in that the text is there, but the proclamation date as to when they come into force and effect is not there, nor are any of the regulations that would be used to interpret and implement some of those changes.
Thank you. Councillor Hopkins.
I appreciate the update from staff. Thank you very much. And with that, I will go to Councillor Squire. He would like to make comments on number three before we vote.
Councillor Squire.
Thank you very much, through the Chair. For me, this is actually of huge importance, this report, and was really welcome because it really represents sort of a new approach that we're taking with regard to the availability of land. What we're doing here is, there's two school sites that are going to come available as the school board will no longer need them. And what we have basically said is the Affordable Housing Corporation will be the lead on that to try to, if possible, purchase those lands so that they're available for the development of affordable housing. For me, this is a quantum step forward in an approach of saying, let's actually become buyers of land and builders of buildings for people to live in that are affordable. I just had an opportunity to meet today with the leadership of Addiction Services in London as well as Canadian Mental Health Association, and it all comes back to housing. The ability of people to move forward with their lives and overcome whether their drug additions, mental health challenges, it all comes back to housing. So this, for me, is extremely, extremely welcome. We have priority through the corporation to buy these properties. Whether it'll succeed or not, I don't know, but for me, it's a welcome change of us just becoming investors in buildings, but actually becoming the force behind building affordable housing, so I was really pleased to see this.
Thanks very much. Councillor Turner.
Thank you, your worship. Just to follow up on Mr. Barrett's comments, I think it's really important to note the order of operations in the timeline that was associated with that. The province had requested public comments with a deadline of June 1st, and the bill received royal assent on June 6th. Obviously, there was no intent, I'm sorry, I withdraw that. It appears that there was little intent to incorporate any of the public input and the significant amounts of public input from municipalities across the province and citizens across the province into the final draft of that bill, which received royal assent. So it's very disappointing, and it certainly sparks a bit of a strain in the municipal-provincial relationship.
Thank you. Councillor Hopkins.
Sorry, my mic was off. So I want to thank the committee. With that, I'd like to put the items on the floor for a vote.
Thanks very much, colleagues. That's all, with the exception of clause 10, 3.6. We turn your attention to the screen as we vote.
Councillor Kayabaga. Closing the vote and the motion carries, 15 to 0.
And, your worship, I would like to hand the Chair over to Deputy Mayor Helmer. He did chair this portion of the committee. This is on 3.6, the application at 307 Fanchop Park Road East, as I would like to speak to it.
Deputy Mayor Helmer.
Thank you. We had a good discussion, committee heard from a number of members of the public and the applicant and our staff. The proposal is for 42 units and two buildings. One is nine meters tall, the other is 12 meters tall. It's 75 units per hectare. We had two competing ideas at committee, both of which failed on a tie. So we had the idea of a referral, which failed on a tie, and we had the idea of the staff recommendation, which was put forward and failed on a tie. So the matter is coming to full counsel with no recommendation at all from the planning committee.
Looking for a speaker's list as appropriate. Councillor Hopkins.
Thank you, your worship. I would like to speak to this. And first of all, I would like to thank the community for their very well-researched and thoughtful presentation at Planning Committee. And I'd also like to staff, thank staff too for working with the community these past couple months, holding meetings. And I'd also like to acknowledge the applicant as well for the work that he has done. And as you know, we have received further information from the applicant. He heard the community's comments about the trees, the, trying to save some of the trees that are on the property as well as the hedge, and I know we've all received communication from the applicant. You may be wondering why a councillor from Ward Nine is representing Ward Five. The councillor has recused herself and has asked me to facilitate the community with information and setting up meetings, and I have been working with the community for the past couple months. I want to just sort of say that I know one thing, working with this community, it understands that there will be some form of intensification. In fact, they want it to happen, and I too am a supporter of intensification and the London Plan, and we know intensification is going to happen. How is it going to happen? And in this situation, I think the concerns we heard loud and clear from the community that there are many concerns. And they will have an opportunity to address some of them through a site plan process, so it is important that we keep that H5 holding, that remains on the public site plan. This is a rezoning application to allow intensification for 75 units. So there's a three-story that has 24 units and a two-story that has 18 units. It totals 42 units. We heard loud and clear that the community would like less, but what is that number? I think we all had doubts about what is the right intensification for this application. We only have a concept at the moment, but we are approving a zoning application tonight for the 75 units per hectare. This infill is surrounded by approximately 17 homes, which will be directly affected. The concerns are, right now, how will it fit? How will the trees be maintained for the privacy and for the buffering? How will the trees be maintained for the privacy and for the buffering? And we know there's a new tree plan that is being presented by the applicant. Also, the site grading and elevations and the sanitary and stormwater management plan. These are concerns that the community has. If you're going to approve this intensification, which is the maximum density allowed, at the very best, at the very least, give the community the assurances that this will fit.
Excuse me, councillor, forgive me for interrupting, but if you're going to be speaking to this, we are either speaking to, there is no recommendation yet, so I think it would be appropriate if there was a recommendation, since there was none recommended through the committee, as you speak to it. So I'm being mindful of your time, but you might want to do that before we carry on too much further. Please.
Thank you, your worship. I would like to refer this, then, this application relating to the property located at 307, be referred back to Civic Administration in order to undertake additional work with the applicant in relation to proposed tree protection, elevation, intensification, and site grading concerns, and an urban plan review. It being noted that the Planning and Environment Committee reviewed and received the following communications with respect to this matter, and these are communications that are noted from M Crawford as well as B Day, and the attached communications from M Crawford as well. It being noted that the public participation meeting associated with these matters, the individuals indicated on the attached public participation meeting record made oral submissions regarding these matters. So that is the referral that I am asking council to, before we approve this intensification, that further consideration be given. I do have a secondary for that.
There is a referral mover on the floor, is there a secondary? Counselor Pelosi. Any comments or questions with respect to the referral? Counselor Van Hooft, did you wish to speak to the referral?
I do, your worship. Thank you very much. I had the opportunity to visit the site and have a look at the plan. My concern about that is about the grading. In my own ward, we had a development go up. Residents were concerned that because of the grading, they might find themselves with flooded basements. They were assured that would not be the case, and unfortunately, the development's gone up. There was a swale that was put in there that was supposed to deal with the measures, but they've actually had now their basements flooded for the first time. So my question through you to our staff then is, how can we ensure that a similar thing won't happen here where we're also faced with real questions about the water runoff?
Staff, wish to handle that question? Mr. Cottfuss?
Through, your worship, all site plan-related matters are, there is an engineering component that requires that the stormwater management of the site, that the site actually retains all the water runoff, that there is normal flows that actually do come off the site that naturally occur today, but any additional flows that are created by the development itself have to be retained on-site. So I can't speak to your particular situation. I believe staff are looking into that, but that's the normal process, and that's handled through the site plan stage.
Thank you. Any follow-up?
I'll leave it there.
Thanks very much, Counselor Squire.
Thank you very much, through you, Mr. Chair. I supported the referral at committee, and I'll support it again today. And this is, if Counselor Cassidy was here, she'd be pleased to hear this. I've been listening to her for a long time, talking about how we're sort of doing things backwards, and site plan is so, can be so much more important than the zoning change, and I was a little skeptical about that. But after the meeting last week, I see that she's right, and any of you can pass that on to her as soon as you see her, and I'm sure she'll be thrilled. I think that the challenge is that there's a huge gap in understanding between the community and the applicant, neither of whom are showing any bad faith in terms of proceeding forward, but there's a real gap in information about what is ultimately going to be on that site, what it's going to look like, how it's going to affect their properties. I understand the answer is, well, we'll do that at site plan, but I think this could be fleshed out much more now in terms of providing some comfort to the community. They've already indicated, and it's been said many times, that they're not against something being developed on that site. I think it's always healthy if we can, if we can try to move the parties closer together, that we try to do that. So I supported the referral at committee, and I'll support it again.
Thank you. Counselor Turner?
Thank you, your worship. At committee, we had a really good discussion, and all the points on both sides of the debate were very valid. And it was challenging for the members of the committee and to kind of come to a decision, and that's why it's reflected in a no decision and no recommendation for council. The, when the community spoke, they spoke eloquently. They brought forward a lot of the concerns, and they were, they had been repeatedly advised through the process prior to arriving at the public participation meeting that a lot of the issues that were being raised were issues that do get addressed in site plan. And so that's challenging, because as Counselor Squire mentioned, there's a lot of unknowns that are left, and when there's unknowns like that, that creates a significant amount of apprehension. There also has to be, it's the process that we have. The process is, an application comes forward, public participation meeting associated with zoning to determine if that intensity is the appropriate intensity for the site, and then the issues of how it's cited on that parcel get sorted out at the site plan stage. There was a recommendation in the staff proposal to include an H5 holding provision to allow for community participation in another public participation meeting at the time that the site issues were being discussed and addressed, which would also allow those opportunities for more input and collaboration. As Counselor Hopkins talked about, I believe you were referring to the Urban Design Peer Review Panel for having a referral of this design and this site to the Urban Design Peer Review Panel for review and recommendations as it came forward to the site plan stage, and which I thought was quite appropriate. So one of the things we tried to do in the recommendation that ended up failing on a tie was to put forward that the concerns that we heard from the community, tree preservation, site grading, and the urban design peer review, all be incorporated as requirements in moving forward towards the public participation meeting for the site plan. So those were all components that were included in it. The vote was 2-2, and so it failed on the tie. I still stand by that recommendation. I think that's the appropriate course forward, and I think it's the appropriate manner in which to address these concerns, because they are site plan-specific concerns. So at this point, I would, I would vote against the referral. I think this is something that can be addressed over the course of the next part of the planning process, and I think it's most appropriately dealt with there.
Thank you. Counselor Lewis?
Thank you, your worship, and I want to thank both Counselor Squire and Counselor Turner for their comments. I share a lot of those views on both sides, and I too have heard from many members of the community, as well as the applicant. And I understand that, you know, there's a desire to move forward. Obviously, the applicant is in the business of developing and making a profit on those ventures, and I don't begrudge them that at all. So, of course, the maximum intensity is what they would prefer. I also understand the community's concerns about how this is going to fit in their neighborhood. Fanshawe Park Road, obviously, is a high-intensity area that we want to see intensification on, but it also has many neighborhoods behind it, and we have to think about those folks too. I do have one question for you through staff, and this may actually be a repeat of the earlier answer, but since the new tree protection plan has come forward, has that been reviewed in terms of the stormwater management? Because I've certainly heard concerns that if we change the storm flow, then trees that are designated for protection may be negatively impacted by the drainage that's currently proposed. And I would hate to say, say we're preserving trees when in fact we actually end up killing them by flooding out their roots. So I just wonder if staff have looked into that matter.
That's a question of staff. Mr. Cottfuss, please.
Through, through, your worship, so again, a lot of these details will come out, and I appreciate the concern with respect to process, but at this point in time, we're really talking about kind of the intensity and use of the site. And you're right, Counselor Turner was correct about kind of the process that follows later, where they actually, there's a significant investment that needs to be made at that point in order to come up with all the detailed plans, all the detailed stormwater drainage reviews, the tree preservation, and so on and so forth. There's quite a few studies that we require as part of the site plan approval stage, and part of that is also the tree preservation plan. So preliminary review of the, of what is proposed, and again, this will come out in more detail, is there's actually a break in the, in the stormwater runoff on this, on this site. Some of it'll break towards Fanshawe, and some will break towards the back, which will be caught through, through catch basins. And as part of that, it'll minimize the amount of grading that was involved with this site. And as part of that, hopefully, that'll mitigate some of the concerns with respect to trees and tree preservation. We will be obtaining a detailed tree preservation, preservation report as part of the site plan approval as well, and that would be considered in terms of what types of trees and how many we could save. There is hopes that we could save the majority of the perimeter trees, but recognizing any sort of intensity or any sort of development is going to eliminate trees on this site. So it's just, at this point in time, what is that appropriate intensity, and that's what's before you today.
Any follow-up?
One brief follow-up then, and I apologize if I've missed this in all the reports and communications that have been forwarded to us on this matter. Is there any sense from staff right now that if this was to go forward, part of the process moving forward would require, because we're talking about removing some very mature trees, some of these are much older than I am, they may even be older than his worship is, and those take some time to grow, so I'm wondering if there would be any requirement for the developer to have a plan to replace trees that are removed with trees situated elsewhere on the property?
Before I have staff answer that, I would share with Counselor Lewis that I have shoes older than you. Mr. Cottfuss, please.
Through, your worship, yes, so as part of that discussion and part of that review, the tree protection zone applies to all properties in London, but when they come through an actual development application, such as site plan as well, we rely on those processes to review the trees in question. And as part of that, there is compensation that occurs with respect to trees, and we still look to have additional plantings within there. We'll require a landscaping plan, and that'll determine where the trees will be planted best and to provide some adequate amenity space as well, so.
Thank you. On the question of referral, before I ask Counselor Hopkins to wrap this, I'll invite any other comments or questions. Counselor Hopkins. Counselor Helmer, thank you.
Thank you. Just through the Chair, to our staff, since we're talking about a referral, I wonder if you could give us a sense of where things are in terms of the timeline for a decision by council, and if there was an appeal about non-decision, sort of when that would become an opportunity.
Mr. Cottfuss?
Through, your worship, so the application was received on January 11th, so the, basically, the, we are actually at the end of the timeline, which is today. So a referral would be potentially putting this application into an appeal for non-decision if we, if a referral were to proceed.
Deputy Mayor Helmer, any follow-up to that? All right, thank you. Any other comments? Counselor Hopkins?
Thank you, and thank you to my colleagues for your comments. I appreciated them. I know we're coming towards the end of the timeline, but that doesn't mean that the applicant and staff and the community can still not work together. That is always an opportunity that still exists. I agree with Counselor Turner. We do have a process in place, and how this process is going to work is very, very important to this community. We, tonight, are recommending a change in intensification on this property. We've just received a new tree plan that hasn't even been considered in how this, how this development will work. It's still not answered right now. So there's still an opportunity with this referral to look at this new tree plan, to take a look at the concerns from the community. The H5 still exists with the site plan process, but the site plan process, the community, isn't part of that. They're not part of those discussions. The zoning application is where the, they can make comments at a public participation meeting, but now, as we decide on this intensification, this is important to the community and how this concept is going to fit. And I just want to remind my colleagues, if we're going to approve this intensification, which is the maximum density, at the very least, give the community the assurances that this will fit. The elevations, which are going to be about eight feet higher to the back of this property, how the site grading and all that is going to work are a concern for these neighbors, the 17 of them. Just want to remind those budding neighbors. We can do that now, before approving the zoning changes, by referring it back to Civic Administration for a peer design review to determine the form and the fit. That's something that we can do here. It may come back saying there's no problem with elevations and grading, and we also have new information, like I said, about the tree plan. So all that can be considered before coming back again for final approval. So in summary, I would encourage the applicant and staff to continue working together. This application may represent over-intensification than what is suitable for this site, and I would urge council that the referral back may give a better indication of this application, that it is suitable for the scale of the building and the density, and for now, the request for the zoning change not be granted, and I really look for your support.
Thank you. A motion to refer this to staff for further consideration, as previously detailed, moved by Counselor Hopkins, seconded by Counselor Pelosi. No other comments, so I will turn your attention to the screen as we vote for the referral or not.
Counselor Kehrer-Bagger? Closing the vote, and the motion carries, 12 to 2 with one recuse.
Thanks very much. That deals with 307 Fanshawe Park Road for now. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Helmer. The 11th report of the Planning and Environment Committee, Counselor Hopkins.
Thank you. I just wanted to let the community know that it has been referred back. I would like to now present the 11th report of the Planning and Environment Committee. We've had two Planning Committee meetings in the past couple weeks. I have not heard from my colleagues of any items to be, oh, there is an amendment on this, but I haven't heard from any of my colleagues that they would like to have any items pulled. There's a pre-amendment sheet, as you can see in Clause 5. I think you have it in front of you. Council item 8.2.8 is the repeal of the building bylaw, B6, and the proposed building bylaw, B7. We're amending by replacing the public comments with the attached revised public comments, and the rationale behind this is to correct typographical errors.
Thank you. Is there a secondary for that amendment? Counselor Hillier?
Sorry, your worship, just a point of order, just for clarification. As this is a singular item within the report, is there an opportunity to pass the bulk of the report prior and then make the amendment afterwards?
There's always that possibility, and if it's the pleasure, we will remove that one portion, so we'll have its separate discussion or at least vote. We have a mover, still with Counselor Hopkins, seconded by Counselor Hillier.
Mr.?
Sorry.
Mr. Mayor.
Excuse me, Counselor Hopkins. So we are, yeah, just to advise the clerk, but actually to clarify, we're dealing, what the motion that's on the floor is to deal with all of the issues except the amendment. And so my question would be, is there anything else that anyone would like to? And, so my question would be, uh, is there anything else that anyone would like to have, wished to have withdrawn? Uh, Counselor Hillier will wait for that, that seconding on the amendment, not on this particular portion which does not require one. So, uh, anything else? Any other comments? Counselor Turner on this, not speaking to the amendment, though.
Thank you, your worship. Just with respect to items, uh, let me get this right, uh, item five, three point two in the Planning Agenda, uh, one eighty Village Walk Boulevard. This is a, an irregular parcel of land, uh, within the, um, subdivision that's being built to the northwest corner of Sunningdale and Richmond. Uh, this parcel is, is a remnant parcel, and they are placing, uh, row houses in there. And I just wanted to make note, because often when we have debate and discussion at council and at planning committee, we're often kind of assailing, uh, some of the aspects of and attributes within a, a plan and recommendation. In this one, it actually is a, is a really good, uh, fit for an irregular parcel. It's, uh, it's aesthetically, uh, pleasing, it, it uses some really good planning principles, it engages a park, uh, it fronts on the park and then, uh, and backs on, uh, to a driveway where the, the cars will access into the, um, to the garages. Uh, so I, I just wanted to rise and recognize this, that it's actually a really good application, and, and we don't say that enough, uh, when these come forward, so it's a good opportunity to, to point those out, uh, and so that the development industry can take note of these things and say, what, uh, what goes smoothly through council and through the planning committee, this is one of those ones.
Thank you, Counselor Turner. Any other comments, uh, or questions? Counselor Pelosi.
Thank you, your worship. In regards to item seven, uh, which correlates to item three point four, I just want to thank the planning committee as they went through the public participation meeting. Um, this application is in Ward Twelve, it's Southdale Road, um, connecting White Oaks Road down, which also crosses Bradley to Exeter. Community members from across this area, those passing through this area has raised concern, as well as people reaching out from St. Thomas, also raising their concerns as there's a gymnastics facility in this area, that school bus can't turn, there's been some Canada Post issues, uh, there's no turning lane, so the cycling lane has also been doubling as the turning lane. So some safety concerns, so I'm thanking staff and the committee for hearing the public participation concerns about the speed limit on this road, and though it is an arterial road when it was built, it's, it's placed in our community as changing of more, a residential area, there's, there's driveways up back onto it too. So just thank you for the planning committee for hearing everyone's concerns and bringing them forward and directing staff accordingly, so thank you.
Thanks very much. Any other comments or questions with respect to the motion, all the items with the exception of the amendment? Seeing none, I'll turn your attention to the screen, please.
Closing the vote, the motion carries fifteen to zero.
Counselor Hopkins.
And with that, your worship, I would like to put number eight, three point five, the repeal of the building bylaw, B6, and the proposed building bylaw, B7, which relates to the bill, uh, number two hundred, and as you can see, there's a pre-amendment sheet on that. I would just like to, um, say and thank staff.
Before we say, uh, we have a second, Counselor Hillier, thanks for coming back. Counselor Hopkins, please.
Thank you. So this is the repeal, um, and, and the change to, uh, building permits, uh, and, uh, as, uh, from the report, you could see the last time they were changed was in twenty twelve, so it's been a while. It's important, uh, that, uh, we become, um, that building permits pay for themselves, and so there, for the first time, we'll be introducing, uh, fee indexing, as well as a number of new deaths, definitions and categories, uh, and hopefully a simpler way to administer these building permits. So, uh, we are changing the, the bylaw, and one thing I learned, that it, St. Thomas, uh, we're pretty much on par to St. Thomas when it comes to building permits, and, and we're the eighth lowest in the province as well. We had a public participation, uh, engagement, LDI was, was there with their comments and, uh, really, uh, had a, a, a good, robust discussion, uh, committee. So with that, uh, I would like to put the, uh, amendment on the floor.
On the floor, duly seconded. Any other comments or discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Turn your attention to the screen.
Counselor Hopkins. Your worship. Closing the vote, the motion carries fifteen to zero.
Back to you, your worship.
Well, actually, thank you. Now we require, uh, voting, uh, on the motion as amended. So Counselor Hopkins, I presume you'll move that?
Yes, I will.
Perfect. Seconded by Counselor Cassidy. Comments or questions? Turn your attention to the screen as we vote, please. The mayor votes yes.
Closing the vote, the motion carries fifteen to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Hopkins.
Thank you.
Uh, the sixth report of the Community Protective Services Committee, Counselor Cassidy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to put the sixth report of Community and Protective Services on the floor with the exception of items three and eleven, there were conflicts declared, and item nine, um, had an A, B, and a C, which was voted on separately at committee, and, uh, and, uh, there were some split decisions there. I'm also getting a signal that item six, somebody is requesting item seven, sorry, item seven be pulled. So I would put the entire report with the exception of three, seven, nine, and eleven.
Are there any other items the colleagues wish to have considered separately? Seeing none? Any other comments or questions with respect to what is on the floor? I'll turn your attention to the screen as we vote.
Closing the vote, the motion carries fifteen to zero.
Counselor Cassidy.
So I will put item three on the floor, which is also two point three from the committee report, the London Middlesex Child Care and Early Years Service System Plan, and I believe two of my colleagues de, have, uh, have declared any interest on that.
Yes, they have, uh, whether they wish to stay in their seats or remove themselves from their seats, or remove themselves from their seats, if they wish to. If they wish to. Uh, any other comments? Or not? Any, any comments are, it's, those are comfortable seats, I understand why people'd like to stay. Comments or questions with respect to this issue? Seeing none, we'll call a question.
Counselor Van Host, Counselor Van Meerbergen.
No, he's recused.
He can hit.
Recused. Say so.
Closing the vote, the motion carries with thirteen with two recused.
Counselor Cassidy.
And I'll put item seven on the floor, which is two point eight from the, uh, committee report, single source nineteen dash thirteen, single source procurement of dispatch consoles for one voice emergency communication system, and Counselor Turner asked that that be pulled.
Any comments or questions? Well, let's hear from Counselor Turner then.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, I think it's really quick, it, this is, uh, um, I might have misread a little bit, this is with respect to the procurement of consoles. Uh, the, uh, the Harris, uh, Canada Solution is the, um, and the communications, one of the issues we had in our last term was that the communication software itself, uh, ended up finding itself at end of life, and we found ourselves, uh, incurring a fairly significant cost to, uh, renew a contract and, um, and extend, uh, our association with, uh, with the service provider, uh, as I recall. Uh, but as this is for the consoles to fit in all the hardware associated with that, uh, I, I think I'll withdraw any question that I might have at this point.
That may have been one of the longer withdrawals I've ever heard, but that's a very thoughtful way to say it, thank you. Any other comments or questions? And we'll call the question, I'll turn your attention to the screen.
Counselor Salie. Closing the vote, the motion carries fifteen to zero.
Counselor Cassidy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item nine, which is two point four from the committee report, and it was a staff update on the London strengthening neighborhood strategy and the neighborhood decision-making program, uh, and not, uh, it was, uh, split out into an A, B, and a C because some committee members suggested some, um, some added changes to the process, uh, and I pulled the item because there were different voting patterns on items A, B, and C. A was, uh, asking staff to report back about making locations ineligible for funding in consecutive years. Uh, part B was about splitting up the geographic boundaries further. Currently, there are five zones where funding is received for neighborhood, uh, projects, and, uh, C is putting a cap on the amounts given to each project. So I, I suggest that based on how the committee voted, uh, that we might want to split it up again as an A, a B, and a C.
And so you have. With respect to that, then, colleagues, uh, we'll turn your attention to A, dealing with that separately. Any comments or questions? Counselor Lewis?
Thank you, your worship, and I think, uh, I'd just like to comment quickly for colleagues' clarification, because this was an item that I put forward, making locations ineligible for funding in consecutive years. That doesn't mean that, uh, the northeast or the southeast wouldn't be eligible in the following year. It's specific to the addresses of locations where funding is allocated, so if a park with address one, two, three Main Street wins this year, one, two, three Main Street would not be eligible next year to receive the funding, so that it creates an opportunity for the pots of funding to move around the districts that we've established so far. So I just wanted to share the, the rationale with colleagues on that.
Thank you, Counselor Morgan.
Yes, I'm gonna disagree with Counselor Lewis and say, I don't think this is a good idea. Um, I actually think if we pass B and C, we're going to probably solve the problem, and the reason why I don't think we should restrict specific addresses is because I think district parks are important, um, community facilities that serve a number of communities, and I certainly want, wouldn't want to restrict a district park from having two different features in two consecutive years that serves a larger area. I think most of the concerns are related to more community-based projects. I think putting a cap on the number of projects, which will naturally increase the number of winners, as well as splitting up the geographic boundaries further, creating more, um, voting locations, is likely to solve a majority of the problem. Should there still be a problem, I'd be happy to support A in the future, but I, I think there might be some unintended consequences to, uh, to creating a restriction of a specific address that, um, may not benefit the program overall. Uh, I want to make some general comments about the program, too. Uh, I know we split this up into pieces, uh, I'll look to your worship's guidance on whether you want me to do those now, or whether you want me to do them, um, at the different voting interests.
The question I have, Counselor Morgan, is we have A, B, C, are you looking A subsection two, or what are your, what are your thoughts, please?
No, I just want to make some general comments on the committee debate, so I'm gonna do that now. Um...
Counselor Morgan, give us your thoughts.
So, um, I, 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 I know a lot of this discussion was about the winners, and, and, and I need to say this because this program's very important to me, um, we can't ignore the value of the process, irrespective of who wins, because we have decided as a council that we are going to do a couple of things with neighborhood decision-making. One is, we're gonna let anyone participate. Doesn't even matter if you're, uh, eligible to vote in a municipal election, doesn't matter if you're a Canadian resident, doesn't matter if you have status in Canada, you can actually participate in shaping your neighborhoods by participating in the process, and for some people I met during the process, very first time they voted on anything, ever. And I think that that's valuable, regardless of who wins, the, the participation in a democratic process, participating in trying to shape your community. As well, we allowed for any age to vote, and I know my own daughter, and I've told this story before, the very first time we voted, um, she was having trouble going to sleep, and, and I asked her what the problem was, and she was worrying about her vote the next day, um, because she was thinking about it, and she wasn't sure whether she should support the water fountain at the district park, or the, or the park benches that her friend really wanted in her class at the local place where he plays baseball. Uh, I told her, you get three votes in that one, and she asked if she could vote for her thing three times, which I said no. But, the point is, you know, my very young daughter is thinking about voting on something and shaping her community and what her friends think, and she's talking about it in her classes, so I know that we can make some really good changes, I support some of these changes here, but, but, but let's not forget the value of the program and the process inherently in allowing people to participate in shaping their community in this way, because, because there's a ton of value in people just going out, knocking on doors, and trying to convince others of supporting a project that they feel makes their neighborhood or their community better. And so that's why with A, I, I, I tend to not want to put too many restrictions on people going out and, and engaging in that process, even if it's at the same address. B and C, I think, actually can enhance the process by creating more opportunities in more geographic areas, so, um, but, but, but let's not get hung up on who wins and who loses, because the process has inherent value as well for, uh, for the way that Londoners interact in, in their community and, and with their civic government.
Counselor Morgan, while that was a broader discussion, I think it was germane to, uh, this component as well as the whole, uh, notion of this, uh, program. Counselor Pelosi.
Thank you, your worship, and certainly, serving on this committee, I was the, the lone A on this one. My concerns with this is, and we had a very thoughtful, robust discussion and mindful of Counselor Morgan's love of this project, and certainly I've, uh, served the southwest regional rep, uh, in the last two years this program has run, and I heard concerns from both sides, those who win and those who don't feel disenfranchised. My concern with making certain areas ineligible two years in a row is certain areas or awards only have one green space. Maybe it's a park bench this year, but someone wants to teach edible weeds the following year, but in that location, it would be ineligible. So just trying to make sure that we have inclusiveness as we're moving forward. We thought that some projects taking all the money could disenfranchise some people because big things can be exciting, and that was where we went with the caps, and geographic boundaries at some areas are just more engaged than others. We see it in voting turnout, and this was following some of those same patterns. So I supported the other two, which I'll continue to do tonight, and would ask you to make it that if it is the same location multiple years in a row, that you do vote in favor of allowing that to continue, just mindful of how different residents use different space, and some of our public spaces serve different areas of people that are trying to use our parks or school facilities.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Van Host.
Thank you. I'm happy with, uh, all A, B, and C. I think this is a kind of thing that we can experiment on and try, try little tweaks and see, see how they work, uh, to some of Counselor Morgan's, uh, points, um, although he's talking about, um, district parks being, uh, eligible more than, uh, once, uh, every, every two years. Uh, this also isn't district decision-making, it was neighborhood decision-making, and so I, I like the idea of having... It was neighborhood decision-making, and so I like the idea of having more smaller grants to many neighborhoods. And then, to his point again, many people can participate and feel that they made a difference when they voted. So I like these changes. I hope we go forward with them. I'll support them.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on A? Counselor Turner.
Thank you, Your Worship. Really quickly, Counselor Morgan made a very compelling argument. I think it's quite appropriate and makes sense that we would want to continue to engage communities year after year and not exclude them out of the process on a given year because they were successful in the previous year.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, just for clarification, we are voting on A. As we do, if you support this, that would make, I'll say it just simply, same location funding ineligible the next year. If you vote nay, the contrary is true. So I will turn your attention to the screen as we vote. Counselor Cassidy.
I'll put B on the floor, and B was about splitting up the geographic boundaries further, so going from five zones to possibly more zones. And again, all of this is about a report back. It's not about implementing these specific changes. It's asking staff to look at how we could implement these changes.
So what you're saying is A, B, and C ultimately, regardless of status, will be reconsidered going forward at some stage. Thank you. We are dealing with B, splitting up geographic boundaries. Any comments or questions? Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, Your Worship, and on B, hearing what my colleague Counselor Morgan said in respect to A, I'm going to say I respectfully disagree with him on B, because I think that further splitting up the geographic boundaries actually is going to put a significant increase in burden on our staff in terms of running this program. It means more outreach is required to neighborhoods. It means more people at polling locations so that the votes can come in on Election Day. And I just think that we have a program here that has admittedly limited resources. We may opt to change those resources in the multi-year budget process, but I think we have to be very cognizant of the fact that none of this happens without the resources and efforts of our amazing staff. I, like Counselor Pelosi, participated as a neighborhood outreach coordinator in the southeast district for two years in a row. I think this is a very, very positive program for the community, but it doesn't happen without our staff. And if we go from five districts to eight or 10 or whatever, I'm concerned about the additional workload that we're levying on them, understanding that if this is passed, they will report back with some options. But I think that with respect to them, that we've passed A, that will cover things better than B will. So I will leave that for my colleagues' consideration and look forward to some more vigorous debate and helping this program move forward.
Vigorous indeed. Counselor Squire, please.
Just, again, I don't want to repeat it, but we're not making the decision tonight. And so I've received enough feedback on B of interest in it that I would like to report back. Whether I'm ultimately going to vote one way or the other, I do not know, but I don't think it's a huge workload to provide a report back when we're doing it in any event. So I don't want to get into this whole issue where there's always going to be all this person power, I guess is the right word, involved when we don't even know what we're going to implement. So I'm hoping we can keep it a little short.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll turn your attention to the screen, noting that if you vote yea, then you are agreeing to split up geographic boundaries further, and nays to the contrary.
Closing the vote and the motion carries fourteen to one.
Counselor Cassidy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I will put item C, which was about putting a cap on the amounts given to each project. In the past, there was no cap. There is an amount for a specific geographic area, and in theory, one project could have won the entire amount.
We're all talked out. I'll turn your attention to the screen as we vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries fifteen to zero.
Counselor Morgan. Excuse me, Counselor Cassidy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll put item 11, which is 4.2 from the committee report, the second report of the Childcare Advisory Committee, and one of my colleagues declared a conflict on this item.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll turn your attention to the screen as we vote.
Your Worship, I will vote manually yes. For some reason, my terminal is blanking on me.
Thank you.
Closing the vote and the motion carries fourteen with one recused.
Thank you, Counselor Cassidy. Counselor Morgan, please.
Okay, I'm happy to present the 13th report of the Corporate Services Committee. There are six items. I'm not aware of anybody who wants to deal with any of them separately, but I'd be happy to look for them now. I'm going to make a comment on just one of them, though. We do them together.
Before we do, any items that colleagues wish to have dealt with separately? Seeing none, Counselor Morgan.
Sure. The only comment I'll make, if you've read the committee report, which I assume everybody has, one piece of update that we received related to the provincial budget and the recent proposed changes and the financial impacts on the corporation. Since the printing of the report, there was actually an update out of the province of Ontario, saying that they were going to not make a number of the retroactive cuts to services that would have impacted the municipal budget in 2019. So the $4 million impact, our treasurer estimated it at more like $900,000 for that year, although the $6.6 million impact through the course of the multi-year budget would remain at this time, given the information we have. And obviously, the report outlines some of the things we know and some of the things we don't know, so those are just rough numbers. But I did want to just point out for the committee, if you've looked at the report, we did receive some new information at the time of the committee that you should be aware of as you vote on this information report.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions with respect to the motion? Duly moved, as I turn your attention to the screen, please.
The vote carries fifteen to zero.
Thank you, Counselor Morgan. And we have a special raconteur for the 8.5, the 14th Report of Strategic Priorities Committee. I'll call on Counselor Lewis, please, to present the report.
Thank you, Your Worship. I am pleased to table the report of the 14th Report of the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee. I have not been advised, oh, Counselor Cassidy, may have an item that she wishes to have pulled. I was not advised of any ahead of time, but we will go to Counselor Cassidy.
Counselor Cassidy, is there something you'd like to have considered separately, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull from two on this report. It's 4.1 clause H, and I would like to vote on that clause separately, please.
Noted. Are there any other items colleagues wish to have dealt with separately? Then turning your attention to the screen, all but 4.1 clause H as we vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries fifteen to zero.
Thank you. Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, Worship, and I will now put clause H on the floor.
Comments or questions? Counselor Cassidy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we talked about this particular advisory committee, and it's the Cycling Advisory Committee at Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee. So what we did throughout this whole process is we took the slate of recommended members to sit on all of our advisory committees, and this slate was provided to us by a striking committee. We established this striking committee in order to do this job for us. We delegated this authority to this group of citizens who volunteered their time, and they made recommendations to us. They received a number of applications from members in our community who want to sit on our advisory committees, and they whittled it down. They had additional information available to them that we did not have at council. We delegated this authority to them, and they used the information that was available to them to make recommendations to us. So what happened at SPPC was an additional name was added to the slate of recommendations, and we did a ranked ballot. So the result was a different committee makeup than the one that was recommended to us by our own striking committee with delegated authority to make these decisions for us and recommend this slate of members. So I also want to point out what happened is, so there was one name difference. The new name that was put forward, nominated, ended up being put on this committee, and one that was recommended by the striking committee was left off. So what resulted there, then, is an 11-member committee with now only three women on it instead of four. In the last term of council, we received grant money, seed money, from the Federation of Canadian municipalities, and the money was to be put towards a program that we ran here in the City of London, one of five, only five municipalities in the country to receive this grant money, and it was called Diverse Voices for Change. And the point of this program and the point of the grant that the City of London received was to encourage more civic participation from among women and especially women from diverse backgrounds in the City of London. And we set as our goal, city council, set as the goal for our program run here in London for Diverse Voices for Change, our goal was to increase representation of women and especially diverse women on our advisory committees. So what we've done by not taking the recommendation from our own striking committee is we've reduced the number of women on this particular advisory committee, the Cycling Advisory Committee. And so we have gone against our mandate that we set in our own Diverse Voices for Change program. So that's just one reason to defeat the recommendation that's coming from SPPC. And if this particular slate of committee members is defeated, then what I would like to do, Mr. Mayor, is then make a motion to accept the recommendation from the striking committee. We received no compelling argument or reason to change the slate that was coming forward from the striking committee. We put some faith and trust in these citizens who did this volunteer work on our behalf, and I believe it doesn't send them a very good message when we then reject their recommendations, especially without any kind of significant debate or discussion about why we were doing that. So I'm asking everybody to please vote no to this recommendation coming from SPPC so that we can then put forward the recommendation that came from the striking committee.
Thank you. Counselor Van Hulst.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you all talk to my colleagues and support what Counselor Cassidy has said for a different reason. And I just want to point out that sometimes we do things that have unintended consequences. So what I'd like you to ask is, if it was not your intention to remove April Wall from the committee and add Jamison-Roberts, then you defeat this. And here's the reason I feel bad for April, whose last name starts with a W and is at the bottom of the list, because what we needed to do in this case was a ranked ballot. And I see that in a couple cases, a number of councillors who decided that they didn't want a new person added, put the new individual 12, and then simply ranked everybody, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, all the way down. And April, because her name is at the bottom of the list, got a couple extra elevens and lost by two points. So it was simply by virtue of having to...
Counselor, I just want to suggest we don't imply intent with respect to councillor's decision to vote, so I would ask you to reconsider that comment as opposed to suggesting that they voted 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. I'm sure that's a presumption that none of us would be able to make, trying to understand the minds of how councillors vote.
Okay. Well, I made an observation that was there, and I would point out to you, Your Worship, that a councillor said at the point, we didn't have the resumes there to look at, and it was difficult to make this decision. So that would be one way to deal with this situation, is to do that. It looks to me like that might have happened, but I think in this case, this person might have lost their seat on the committee simply by virtue of being at the end of the list.
Again, we're going to presumption, and I'm going to rule that out of order. Counselor, I've been advised that the committee did receive those resumes in advance, so I just want to make that as a point. And I want to clarify with all colleagues that trying to presume the motives of colleagues around the table, I know there was no mal-intent in the reference, but I would just caution colleagues to be mindful of that, please. Wrap up there, Counselor. Let me rephrase the word. Any other final comments, or Counselor Van Hulst?
Okay. Well, I'm not trying to impute motives to people. Simply, I think we do know that names at the top of lists are often ranked more. There's an advantage to being first. Is that not the case on unusual a ballot? So I think that exists.
I have a whole lot of people ahead of me, but do you want to make a final comment there, Counselor Van Hulst?
All right, sure. So my final comment is, let's vote this down and go with the original recommendation. So thank you.
Counselor Morgan.
Okay, I'm going to try to be nice. Okay, I'm not. All right.
Obviously, that's quite challenging.
Here's what happens. We have a striking committee. They bring forward a slate of recommendations to committee. We had... We had access to the resumes, you can read them if you want. I looked at the Cycling Committee resumes. I actually ranked Ms. Wall number one, because I wanted her on the committee. Other people did not do that. She did not score well in that particular ballot. We decided as a council to use that ballot. We decided to use that ballot irrespective of what the striking committee did. We have every right to do that, because we receive recommendations. From time to time, we make changes. We did not delegate our authority. We had a committee who gave us recommendations on what they thought based on their balancing of the committees. They provided us with lots of extra information to show some of their decision-making on trying to find a committee for different people. So all of that is information that comes back to SPPC for us to then use to make our decision, and you're allowed to vote for or against that decision. People are allowed to vote against what the committee decided tonight, that's perfectly fine. But we decided to go through a process. I wanted Ms. Wall. I ranked her number one. That's how you get someone on the committee. If you want people on the committee, you rank them high, so you express your preferences to your colleagues, and then it shows up to them, and then we support it, and that's what we did. So, like, I don't need to read into any of the votes or why people voted a certain way. We're all elected officials, we've all ran on elections, we all know how to work a ballot, so, like, we don't need to read into each other's votes. This is a way for us to see each other's preferences. We take those preferences, and then we can use them to make a decision. It's a better system than the old way where everybody was just randomly nominating, nominating slates or individuals, and no one wanted to vote against them, because no one wanted to be seen as voting against someone. This is a way where we simultaneously share our preferences. I'm glad, I'm really glad everybody, you know, except for one person, ranked all of the candidates so that we can see the full slate of preferences. That's good. That's, that's an improvement from the way we've done things in the past. So that's what we have. I actually don't like that Ms. Wall wasn't selected, I ranked her number one, but I'm still gonna support the decision the committee made, because that's the process we decided on at the time.
Thank you. Counsel Hopkins.
Thank you, your worship. I didn't support the recommendation, and I'd just like to make a few quick comments. I appreciate Counselor Cassidy's comments about the need for diversity on our advisory committee. That is very important, but that aside, I think it's very important when we have a striking committee come forward with recommendations, unless you have really good reasons to change their suggestions, and I didn't have any, so that's why I, I didn't support the changes to the Cycling Committee. I accepted the, the work that the striking committee had done, and I'm sure there was a lot of work. They had a little bit more knowledge than I had, and I support, supported their decisions, and I had no reason, and I agree with Counsel Morgan, it is our decision, we can change it if we want. Obviously, we made a decision at council, I did not support that decision. I did not come forward with names that I thought could have been better names too, but I took the advice of the striking committee and did not support the, the change. I would like to make another comment, your worship, as well, chairing this committee. I think we as a committee had some challenges when it came to the rank, voting and the balloting and having a true understanding, and I'm really looking forward from the Governance Committee to come forward with, with what the rules are when it comes to ranked balloting. So we ourselves know as a committee what we're doing and what we're seeing when we're forced to make these decisions.
Thank you. Counsel Squier.
This is all through you, Mr. Chair, a bit rich for me. I just want to have you all think back to when a committee came to us with an appointment for the Adult Education Advisory Committee, and they made a recommendation of a person, and we as a group decided we didn't want to accept that person, so we took it to a vote, and we voted on it. So for, for people who, who did that, I think it's a bit rich to come today and say, "Oh, no, we're gonna accept everything the committee brings to us, because they put the work in into it, and they know what they're doing." So I want people to be, just recall that, please. That was a devastating decision for someone, same as all these decisions are, but we decided we were gonna take it out of the, the recommendation of the committee and vote ourselves. Mr. Roberts is someone who I added to the list. I didn't ask anyone else to be removed from the list. Any suggestion that this was done for reasons of gender, this was done for sort of ideologically, it's just not, it's just not what was borne out. And by the way, I supported Ms.-
Point of personal privilege.
Counsel Cassidy.
Yeah, sure.
I just want to clarify, I didn't, I didn't say that this was done for a reason of gender. I would never, ever assume that anyone on this council would want to have gender inequity. I was saying it was one of the unintended consequences.
So noted, thank you.
That's fair enough, I accept that, I accept that statement as being accurate. The issue for me is, we have a right to vote as a committee. When these matters come to us, we have that absolute right to vote, and that's what we did. It's not unusual. I'm certainly not gonna say going forward that we always have to accept the recommendations of the striking committee. I wanted Mr. Roberts' name put forward. I was aware of him through his work and his resume, and I just wanted him to have an opportunity through a vote to get on the committee, which he did. I, I ranked the other person quite high, I was hopeful she would be on the committee also.
So noted. Any other comments or discussion? So then if you vote in favor, you're voting in favor of the votes, the candidates as shown here, the individuals, and if not, we will deal with that separately. Oh, Counsel Lewis, excuse me.
Thank you, your worship. Just before we vote, I want to echo Counsel Hopkins and say thank you to the clerk staff. We did have a very robust discussion about how the ranked ballot needed to be completed and what the consequences of that ranked ballot meant, and our staff worked really hard to make sure that that process was as clear and transparent to us as possible. So just before we vote, I want to thank our staff for the work that they put into that.
We have, may have a record tonight of staff thanking votes, so that's very nice. I mean, seeing no other comments or questions, then I'll turn your attention to the screen as we vote.
Closing the vote. Counsel Van Holst. Closing the vote, and the motion carries 9 to 6.
Thanks very much. And thank you very much, Counsel Lewis, for your, for your first time, that was well done, just saying. Colleagues, I will turn now your attention to added reports, the 12th Report in Council, of Council in closed session. May I turn to Counsel Kaia Baga to present the report, please?
I'd like to report progress in matters that we discuss in closed session.
So noted, is there a secondary? Counsel Sally. Any comments or questions, which feels kind of strange since that was in confidential session? Seeing none, then I'll turn your attention to the screen as we vote.
We are having some issues with the system tonight, it's a little slow.
I thought you were gonna say, "Good things come to those who wait." How good is that?
Counsel Squier and Counsel Turner. Closing the vote, and the motion carries 14 to 0.
Thank you, thank you, Counsel Kaia Baga. I'm not aware of any deferred matters, inquiries, any- Oh, excuse me, there's another item of business. Counsel Sally, please.
Apologies, Mr. Chair. I just need to, I have a conflict, but I have a reconsideration on, just so I can be able to abstain on 2.2 from Corporate Services. Apologies to my colleagues, I did fail the paperwork, but I did not pull that.
We need to vote on reconsideration to determine if that is accepted, moved by Counsel Cassidy, seconded by Counsel Lewis. No discussion on that, so this is a, this is a vote to reconsider the vote. I'll turn your attention to the screen.
Counsel Van Holst. Closing the vote, the motion carries 15 to 0.
Thank you, colleagues. Now we'll have reconsideration of 2.2. Counsel Sally?
Just wanted to declare my conflict as my employer has mentioned in the letter, sorry, in the policy, which is a federal government.
So noted, there's peculiar interest noted, and- Sorry, it feels like a long day all of a sudden, I'm looking for a mover and second- mover for, for 2.2, as reported Counselor, close a secondary by Counsel Kaia Baga. Comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll turn your attention to the screen as we vote then, please.
Closing the vote, the motion carries 14 with one recuse.
Always like reconsidering Counsel Morgan's committee, that's always good things. Colleagues, number 11 inquiries, apparently we, Counsel Van Merber.
Thank you, Mayor. I have an inquiry, I'm sure most of us, like myself, have been inundated with complaints about the lack of grass cutting in parks and in city-owned grasslands, and, and we know why, there's very good reason for it, it's because of the unusually wet weather we've had this spring. But I, I think there could be some real benefit if we launched a, a public service communications campaign explaining that to people, that our equipment is heavy, it sinks, and through no fault of our own, it's an act of God, more or less. So I think in addition to our city website, maybe making that notice through our Communications Department, perhaps we could also use media with communication snippets similar to the ones we do for the downtown construction, that sort of thing. I think for the next few weeks, that might be very beneficial to all of us.
Does staff wish to respond to that or make a comment? Mr. Stafford?
Through you, Your Honor. We have done a little bit more, like you say, we've done on the website, and we've done some social media. We've also reached out to CTV News, and we'll be doing some spots on, during the Weather Channel, actually, during a rainy day to say, "Hey, this is exactly what's going on, and this is why we're having some struggles." But I'll work with the Communications Department as well to see if there's something more that we can do with that.
Thanks very much, and thank you for cooperation from staff. Any other inquiries? Counsel Turner.
Now, thank you, your worship. I imagine most have been paying attention to the media over the past couple of weeks, and this is our first opportunity to have some discussion. I'm going to raise the issue of the unregistered third-party advertisers. This is an inquiry, so I don't think it raises any issues beyond that, but the Municipal Elections Act requires that anyone who spends money on a campaign for or against a registered candidate in the municipal election, or for or against a question on the municipal ballot, is required to register as a third party with the clerk of the municipality and file any expenses associated with that activity. So that's itemized in, in the Municipal Elections Act in Section 88.4. No individual corporation or trade union shall incur expenses for a third-party advertisement that appears during the restricted period for the third-party advertisements unless the individual corporation or trade union is a registered third party under Section 88.6 when the expenses are incurred and when the advertisement appears. So recent reports in the media have provided evidence that individuals or organizations likely did participate in the past municipal election as unregistered third-party advertisers. Information has been provided to council and members of the public that since these third parties were unregistered, a review of expenses by the Compliance Audit Committee would not be within their mandate. So I guess my question through you, your worship, to the clerk, if there are grounds to believe that activities contrary to the Municipal Elections Act did indeed occur, such as these, what recourse is available to have these allegations investigated to, by any sort of independent panel, and to have the matter referred to and represented in the courts where warranted?
Before I ask the clerk to respond to that, I presume your question's of a general nature as opposed to a specific in terms of should this happen, or if there's something further that will come up as a comment beyond this, but that's just a broad comment, I would presume.
Your worship, very much, unintentionally designed that way.
Mindfully worded. Clerk, do you have a response?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, there is nothing in the Municipal Elections Act that provides authority for compliance audits to be undertaken for third parties that are not registered. The Act did provide the clerk with the authority, if something came to their attention, to, at the time, to take action, and we did that, we removed the signs, we had, we did investigate the website, and, but the website was taken down. So that's the only authorization the clerk has under the Act. But the compliance audit complaints and applications are only, in accordance with the Municipal Elections Act, is only for registered third parties.
Counsel Turner, follow-up.
Yeah, through you, your worship. So that seems odd, I guess, to me, that where something is registered, they're subject to some oversight. Where something is unregistered and explicitly prohibited by the Act, they are not subject to any oversight, or to recourse. The Act is, is pretty specific and does spell out penalties and consequences associated with violations of the Act. So to not register would be deemed a violation of the Act, would it not? And how would, would those penalties or recourse be sought if, if not through something like the Compliance Audit Committee?
I'm not sure if the clerk has already answered the question, but I'll let her respond.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, again, the Act only speaks to the authority for the Compliance Audit Committee to take action against a registered third party. It does not speak to third parties who have not registered, or in fact, whether or not this was a third party at all, so that we don't have any authority under the Act to do anything.
So any follow-up as it relates specifically to the, the issue in general, Counsel Turner?
Your worship, that's it for the inquiry, but with, with that answer, that leads to number 12, which is the emergent motion.
So before we get to number 12, I'm not aware of any other inquiries. So I will now turn your attention to number 12, emergent motions. I believe Counselor Turner has something he wishes to bring forward.
Thank you, worship, with respect to the same item. There are qualifications in order to bring forward an emergent motion in front of council. That has been circulated to me in response to my circulation of the motion which I intend to bring forward now. I believe this to qualify as an emergent, as the issue's related to unrestricted third-party advertising continues to be identified on a very current basis, and the mandate of the Compliance Audit Committee will end on June 27th, before there's an opportunity for council to consider options that may be available to provide appropriate mechanisms for investigation. And that if no action is taken, citizens would need to file their concerns through a committee, which we've just heard may not have any authority to hear those. So it puts us in a bit of a quagmire, and, and so that's why I, I would like to bring forward an emergent motion to that effect. So I'll continue on to that, and then I guess a ruling on that can, can be made at the appropriate time. As a preamble, your worship, we don't have an Elections London-
So before we get to that discussion, I think we need a motion to ask for leave, that this be considered-
Your worship, I would like to seek leave for the matter of the motion. Do I need to- Do I need to, I would need to put forward what the motion was in order to seek leave, would I not? Okay, I would like to seek leave for, to bring forward a motion.
Is there a second for that? Councillor Hopkins? Any comments or questions? Well, I actually don't think... We just vote on that, so let's just vote on that. Councillor Cassidy, you have a thought?
Out of an abundance of caution, and since I know what the motion coming forward will be, I'm going to recuse myself on this vote.
So noted, thank you very much.
Councillor Van Holst, and your worship. Closing the vote, the motion carries 10 to 4 with one recuse.
Councillor Turner.
Thank you, worship, and thank you to my colleagues for allowing me the opportunity to present this. Since there's no Elections London, there's an Elections Ontario and Elections Canada, which administer the elections of ours, which administer the elections of those respective governments, it rests on the civic administration to administer the elections to the municipality. And that's appropriate, that makes sense, and that's where, how it's been set out in the Act. But if the compliance audit committee can only deal with registered candidates and registered third party, who oversees those who did not register? I really do recognize the need for impartiality on this, and I'm treading very carefully...
Councillor Turner, I'd just like to enjoy interrupting you, I'm not sure why, but I think to discuss an issue without a motion in front of it, I know we passed leave, but I think we need a motion for discussion, just so we know the direction that we're going. Could we please...
Fair enough, your worship. As you wish. The motion is that the civic administration be directed to investigate and report back to the next meeting of the Corporate Services Committee with options for establishing an independent panel to receive and review complaints associated with potential violations of the Municipal Elections Act, and to refer and provide representation in court on matters where violations are deemed by that panel as likely to have occurred.
Is there a second? Councillor Kayabaga. Carry on, thank you, and pardon me for that interruption, but I thought we needed clarity around...
My apologies, your worship, you're quite correct, there's a process and I need to follow that. Obviously, this isn't something I don't do on a regular basis, it's nothing I enjoy doing, but I think it's of a contemporary and rather pressing nature that we do need to consider this in some way. If the compliance audit committee can only deal with registered candidates and third, registered third parties, who oversees those who did not register? I do recognize the absolute need for impartiality on this item, which is why the motion asks for options on an independent panel. I also recognize that the ability to take such action may be restricted by our authorities under certain acts which govern us, such as the Municipal Elections Act, the Municipal Act, and other acts that might govern. It's also why I've included that options be presented next week at Corporate Services, which would allow legal to review and present opinion at that time. So I do present this as a rather, it is vague in its nature, it's intended to be, but I think with the pressing matter of the compliance audit committee's mandate expiring on the 27th, with very contemporary issues evolving almost on a daily basis right now, that there needs to be some mechanism to continue to provide, I guess, citizens an opportunity to bring those concerns forward. One of the other options is to come forwards through the courts, but that's at an elector's personal expense and personal liability, and those are challenges. So that's why the compliance audit committee exists, for an independent review of the finances associated with the election, so that it can make referrals where they see it's warranted. And I'm looking for, to see if there's options for the municipality to continue that, either by extending or broadening the mandate of the compliance audit committee or some other mechanism. So that's the purpose of the motion, and I would really appreciate your support with that.
Thank you. I'd like to ask a question of the clerk in terms of the, in terms of the reference to the mandate of the compliance audit committee, is there sufficient room for them to do a suggestive without going through this motion? Could you clarify that for the benefit of council?
Through you, your worship. The Municipal Elections Act is very clear as to what the mandate of the compliance audit committee, there's no authority in the Act for the terms of reference for the compliance audit committee to go beyond what is allowed by the regulations. To clarify, I mean, an elector could still make an application to the compliance audit committee, the compliance audit committee would have to determine whether they had jurisdiction. I don't believe they do, but they could still make the application. But the Act does not provide any authority for the mandate of the committee to be expanded beyond what's in the Act.
So just to point of clarification, clerk, are you suggesting that the motion is put forward as moot then, that it won't, that's a legal term I'm trying to learn?
When used properly.
And it may not be used properly right now, but I'm wondering if in this case, while the intent might be, it certainly seems thoughtful and reasonable that it goes beyond the mandate of the Act or our abilities to act within the Act and go beyond that. Just again, clarification, clerk.
Through you, your worship. Again, I don't believe that there is any authority in the Act to expand the terms of reference of the compliance audit committee. The Act is very specific as to what their role is and what they consider and under what circumstances.
Absolutely, councillor Turner.
Your worship, I present that as one potential avenue. I think the motion there does not speak specifically to the compliance audit committee, I just use that as context. It speaks to options that, that the, an independent panel is the wording that I use there. So it does not speak to the compliance audit committee, it looks for options that may be available to the municipality to provide those investigations.
So again, I'll look to the clerk for clarity around that, are we saying the same thing differently, or what is within the mandate, our mandate to consider an independent panel, or any of the other suggestions as put forward in the motion? Trying to bring clarity to this for all our purposes.
Through you, your worship, again, I feel like, I'm sorry, keep going back to this, but I do not believe that the Act has any authority to create a panel. There's nothing in the Act that says a panel could be created to deal with this. As far as actions, it speaks to the elector, it doesn't speak to municipal council, doesn't speak to the clerk bringing actions, it speaks to the elector. So an elector certainly could, if they felt it was warranted, they could certainly seek advice from the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing with respect to their rights under legislation. They can certainly speak to the Ontario Provincial Police to see if there's any investigation warranted under the Act for contraventions, or take their own legal action in court. But I, the Act, in my opinion, does not provide any authority to create such a panel.
So if I might ask another question of the clerk then, again, trying to move this along, if were the determination of council to support the motion duly seconded, what would the options be when it seems, based on your comments, that it is not within our purview to proceed? Does that make it null and void, not being a lawyer, I'm trying to sound like one, and that's a very scary consideration, so I would only ask for clarity around that. If the decision was to vote in favor, what are the implications of that, clerk, please?
Through you, your worship, we can certainly report back, but I do not believe there are any options available.
I don't know what that meant, but I know what response means, but I guess I'm just trying to bring clarity. So ultimately, from your perspective, there would, there could be no action taken, I'm being, trying to be as specific as I can, so that when we give direction to, when we give advice to, and I know you're mindful of giving advice, but when council considers this motion, that we know precisely what's within our rights to do and not do.
Through you, your worship, I'm responding directly to the wording contained in the motion, which was to direct staff to investigate and report back on options for establishing an independent panel. So my response is I don't believe there is an option under the Act to establish a panel.
Can I add another dimension to this? We have learned in council and staff, would you care to, or they might be in the gallery, but Mr. Card, you're here, would you like to make some comments? Good point.
Your worship, I have had the opportunity to confer with the clerk about whether or not there's any possibility for recourse, and I agree with her responses. I believe that the Municipal Elections Act was meant to be a code, and that the responsibilities of everyone responsible for the municipal election is set out in the code. But beyond that, usually if the legislature has occupied an area and doesn't provide municipal powers, that's a pretty good indication that, you know, it doesn't go beyond what's in the Act. But they have actually specified in section 88.7, and I wanted to bring that to your attention, because the councillor mentioned section 88.4, and suggested there was a possibility of a contravention of section 88.4. And what this provision says, that if a municipality is satisfied that there's been a contravention of section 88.3, 88.4, or 88.5, the municipality may require a person who the municipality reasonably believes contravened the section, or caused or permitted the contravention, or the owner or occupier of the land on which the contravention occurred to remove the advertisement or discontinue the advertising. So that's all there is to it, and as the clerk said, that action was taken, the signs were removed, and the, any advertising, whether or not it was advertising remains to be seen, but the activity ceased. So that exhausted what the municipality's responsibility was, what the municipality's power is. And what the councillor is really asking is, well, you know, that's all well and good, but there's a vacuum here, could we fill the vacuum by prescribing some other process? And my answer to that is no, because we don't have the jurisdiction to do that. So what happens with contraventions of the Act? Well, it's the same as any other provincial statute, it's the duty of the police to investigate and to lay charges where they consider appropriate, it's not the function of the council to do that.
So we have heard thoughts and comments from the clerk, from legal counsel. Mr. Turner, what's your pleasure? Oh, excuse me, councillors, I think your pleasure is to hear councillor Squire.
I really appreciate the legal advice, and I really appreciate, I'm very uncomfortable. And I'm uncomfortable because I think anything to do with judging judicial system, making prosecutorial decisions, is not political and should never be political. I express this concern because I was actually the one, just so we're all clear, who raised the concern about public statements being made by politicians about this matter. And I can go through them, and they were very clear. People were saying things like, "An offense has been committed, we should be going to court, we need to do something." And that immediately puts us in a very bad position. There's something called abuse of process, which means if you are doing something for a purpose that is other than what the statute prescribes that we do, which has been set out very clearly, it doesn't prescribe prosecution or fines, it says that material has to be removed, the clerk said that's been done, legal counsel has commented on that. If we want to go beyond that, council and politicians are now stepping into the investigation and the prosecution of matters. Oh yes, we won't be doing it directly, we'll be appointing a panel to do it. I don't know who those panel members are going to be, are they going to be lawyers, are they going to be people from the community? That's a very dangerous process. The job of the police is to investigate offenses, the job of our by-law enforcement officers is to investigate offenses, and then it's the job of the officers that appointed out of that, judicial officers or otherwise, to decide on prosecutions. It's why when a member of provincial parliament called a police station because a constituent was there and involved herself in the process of whether that person may be charged or not, they had to resign their position. So I'm extremely uncomfortable with us as a council jumping into a process particularly where statements have already been made by members of this council directly on what I think is the issue that we're really trying to get at. And if I was a lawyer, I would be making copies of all those statements, and they would go in my abuse of process application, and I say this very seriously. The statements that I saw that were made were very pointed, they were saying people had committed an offense. They were making, they were being judge and jury, and I'm shocked that we're even having this discussion, I really am. I trust that our administration, if there are charges to be laid, if there is investigation, if there are violations, that is their job to do and they should do it. We all know that when somebody phones us and says, "Hey, I'd like my neighbor prosecuted under a noise bylaw," we may immediately say, "Hands off, we don't make those decisions, we don't get involved in the investigation." And now all of a sudden, we're blurring that line. And I really think this is, this would be a monumental change. We're trying to do it in a nebulous sort of way, but with the advice we've gotten today, which is, we have no grounds to do anything, why we're deciding we're going to go into this area can only be political, I fear. That's what I fear, I fear that the motives are political. And the reason I say that is because of what I've heard.
Yes, councillor Turner.
Thank you, your worship. You did mention earlier not to imply intent or assume intent, and I think that's what the councillor just did.
So the noted, but councillor Squire's now completed, and we have a situation where we have received the clerk's advice, and we have received legal advice, and normally I wouldn't particularly intervene, but I think it's, there's a motion on the floor, seconded in this emergent motion, and I think there are some concerns that have been raised that as we consider this, and that would be, I will add my caution to colleagues as we consider that. Any other comments or questions with respect to this emergent motion? Councillor Van Holst.
Thank you, your worship. I generally don't like emergent emotions, I like when it just goes through the normal committee process. However, the councillor did point out that the Corporate Services, or the Compliance Audit Committee has limited mandates, so maybe there's a need to do this quickly. However, if they, in fact, there's nothing that the Compliance Audit Committee can do, then there's really no need for the emergent nature of this motion, so it could be dealt with at another time if, so perhaps the councillor would withdraw the motion and come back with a plan that we might be able to act on.
Thank you. Any reconsideration, councillor Turner?
Your worship, the intent was that if electors wish to bring something forward to an alternative option other than the Compliance Audit Committee, they would need to know so if that existed beforehand, before the expiry of the Compliance Audit Committee's mandate. So if, so that's the need for it to be discussed in an emergent fashion.
I think you've certainly given it thoughtful discussion. The question is though, with a motion on the floor, we've gotten legal advice basically to not proceed, but I'm at your pleasure. If you, colleagues, if we vote in this, then there are some implications, obviously. But councillor Turner, you've thoughtfully brought this to the floor, is there any other, do you wish to reconsider your motion?
Your worship, it seems that there has been some discussion, that the statements from the clerk were, I believe, and what would have been helpful is to have some report back on what those mechanisms were. I, I'm baffled, I guess, that the, that there would be some massive silence on the other side of unregistered, and that there was no mechanism to investigate or evaluate those. The Compliance Audit Committee seems like the most appropriate mechanism, and if that exists, then great, but if it's required, then I suppose we can withdraw. Looks like councillor Helmer wants to say something.
Councillor, Deputy Mayor Helmer, you wish to add to this discussion?
If the motion remains on the floor, I won't be supporting it. I just want to talk about a why. I just want to talk about why. And I do have to be very careful, because in addition to being a counselor, I'm also a member of the Police Services Board, and as Counselor Squire has pointed out, we need to be extremely careful about how we proceed on this topic. I don't want anyone to think that I'm suggesting that we should or should not investigate So that being said, I want to speak generally about the Municipal Elections Act. There are a lot of offenses that you could commit under the Municipal Elections Act. Some of them are related to campaign finance. That is what the Compliance Audit Committee is for, campaign finance-related offenses. That's it. I mean, if you steal a ballot box, and you run away with the ballots, you know, that's still an offense. And there are very significant penalties under the Municipal Elections Act. And there are existing systems to prosecute offenses under the Municipal Elections Act. Anyone who thinks there is an offense under the Municipal Elections Act, go talk to the police. I mean, that's what you should do. If it's a campaign finance-related thing, that's what the Compliance Audit Committee is for, and it's really just for that. So, you know, I don't think that we should be setting up some other group to be looking at other things related to campaign finance to fill in a gap in provincial legislation. I just don't think it's appropriate. I have opinions about all the issues we're dancing around, which I'm not going to get into now, but in terms of the specific proposal from Counselor Turner, which is to set up a panel to look into these things, and an alternative means to look into unregistered third parties, for example, I don't think that's a good idea.
Counselor Hopkins.
Thank you, your worship, and I do appreciate the motion coming from Counselor Turner. And I know it's very broad here, the mandate, and I'm not going to get into the specifics, but I do think that it is important that we understand, or that we show, that we've looked at any concerns. I heard from staff that, are we satisfied? This motion is about a report back. I don't see -- I've heard legal, I've heard the clerk's comments, but I don't see what the concern is, and what the caution is, that we can't get a report back at the next corporate meeting on the concerns here. I think it is something that we can do. I know the electorate can also do it as well, but there's no harm in trying and understanding the concerns that we've heard lately. So I will be supporting the motion to get a report back. That's all we're asking. I know we heard here tonight, but there's no harm in following up at caps, or not caps at corporate.
Thanks very much, with respect, and I'm not here to make commentary. I think what I thought I heard from legal counsel is that there could well be harm, and in fact, beyond that, it's not within our mandate to do this. But can I ask our legal counsel, Mr. Card, could you just bring that back again, and give us some clarity around this before we vote on this? Because we've heard from different views, and I think it's been well-aired, and I think that's a thoughtful process to be well-aired. But having said it, what's within our mandate? Is this motion within our mandate to do? Is that a yes or a no?
It is. It is, your worship. I mean, you can ask for a report. The council's always entitled to ask for a report, but the report you receive back, I think you've heard already what it will say, which is that we have no jurisdiction. We cannot do this. The proper approach is to go to the police.
Counselor Turner? Oh, was it Counselor Turner you had something to add?
Your worship, I withdraw the motion. The rationale here is that the motion was intended to provide the clerk and legal counsel the opportunity to review the request, and have about a week's time to be able to bring that back forward to the committee with exactly what had been stated tonight. I take some offense that this is politically motivated. I'm absolutely one of those people that, and Counselor Squire has spoken to this before, I'm a rules person, and that's my concern with things. And so where I see that, and I see that we don't have a mechanism to be able to provide those supports, then this is the intent of the inquiry. This is why the independence was important with respect to bylaw infractions. We don't get involved with them, but we have a mechanism to investigate those, the bylaw enforcement officers. Counselor Helmer, I wish he had spoken a little earlier, because he's quite right, and I agree. The Compliance Audit Committee is specifically to campaign finances. It is not to the other breadth of violations that might have occurred under the Municipal Elections Act. And if the mechanism is the police, then that's what I would have appreciated at her hearing, is that clearly in the inquiry, is what mechanism exists if something is unregistered and has potentially violated the Municipal Elections Act? What recourse is there? If it's the police, then great, fine. That's an option that's available. But that was the intent of the inquiry, is to figure out what pathways are there. When the Municipal Elections Act, there's questions about whether that's been followed or not, where do we go? I think it was an important discussion that we have at council. I recognize the incredible peril that's associated with walking the line between political and administrative on this, which is absolutely why it needs to be independent and distanced from us. But in terms of any investigatory panels, those are all set up by legislative bodies. Any tribunal was set up by a legislative body. So it makes sense that we refer this off to another body, and that we might be able to look for options to do that. The intent was benevolent. The intent was to make sure that the integrity of our elections process was secure and sound. So I'm a little concerned by some of the aspersions that were cast for this, but I will respectfully withdraw the motion, and thank you for the opportunity to discuss.
Counselor Squire, on point of personal privilege.
Just so we're clear on the intent of what I said, I did not mention anyone's name when I said this. I feared this was political. If this council took steps to move this matter forward, in my view, that would clearly be a political act, not a legal act. And I hope that satisfies the counselor, that I'm not casting aspersions at him, nor would I. I take him at his word that he brought this forward for the proper intent. I have no problem with that, but I confirm that if we move forward, we're acting politically. So I hope that helps.
Well, I think that's been dealt with by the issue of withdrawal of the motion. I did, by the way, for the record, I did not sense, and I try to hear this as colleagues speak, a reference to implying motive or inferring that. So these are older ears than Counselor Lewis, but I try to hear these things and sensitive to that. So with all of that, thank you, Counselor Turner, for bringing this forward, and it's now withdrawn. Colleagues, I'll turn your attention to number 13, which are our bylaws, and I'm asking consideration for bylaws 129 through 209, 211 through 229, and for the referenced, bylaw 210 is the conflict as declared by Counselor Sally. So with that in mind, I will look for a mover. Counselor Lehman, seconded by Counselor Van Mirberg, and I'll call the question as I turn your attention to the screen. Please.
Closing the vote, and the motion carries 14 to zero.
I'll look for a mover and second for third reading of bills 199 through 209, 211 through 229. Counselor Hillier, seconded by Counselor Pelosi. Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Turn your attention to the screen.
Closing the vote, and the motion carries 14 with one recuse. Closing the vote, and the motion carries 14 to zero.
Colleagues, I'll look for a mover and second for third reading and enactment of bills 199 through 209, 211 through 229. Counselor Van Holst, seconded by Counselor Lewis. I'll call the vote.
Closing the vote, and the motion carries 14 to zero.
Colleagues, I'll now turn your attention to first reading, introduction first reading of bill 210. This is the one as indicated where there was a conflict noted, so I will look for a mover. Counselor Kayabaga, seconded by Counselor Lehman. Turn your attention to the screen as we vote.
Closing the vote, and the motion carries 13 with one recuse.
I will look for a mover and second or second reading of bill number 210, and ask if there's any, firstly, a mover. Counselor Pelosi, seconded by Counselor Lewis. Comments, questions? I'll turn your attention to the screen as we vote.
Closing the vote, and the motion carries 13 with one recuse.
I'll look for a mover and second or third reading and enactment of bill 210. Counselor Hillier, seconded by Counselor Pelosi. I'll turn your attention to the screen as we vote. There could be voter fatigue, that's what I'm concerned about, so stay alert. It's 6:30, you're almost about to eat, but it'll be on your own.
Closing the vote, and the motion carries 13 with one recuse.
Colleagues, we come to that special time of the evening before snacks, where we get to adjourn, and I'll look for a mover. Counselor Van -- everybody's enthused. Counselor Van Mirberg, seconded by Counselor Hopkins. We'll do a hand vote on that, all those in favor. That looks fairly unanimous. Colleagues, thanks very much. Thank you, staff, members of the gallery. We appreciate you being here. Meeting adjourned.